Now, five forty-six. I called to order this public hearing on the rezoning of Barcel along East High Street. And I'll allow Jared to give us an overview. This, of course, was publicly posted and advertised. Jared, if you want to take it from there.
All right, so this is a public hearing for the rezoning for three lots on East High Street. We'll call it the Carlisle Point Plaza tract. And I wanted to just take a moment as part of the public hearing to sort of go through several key dates that sort of led us to this point. Staff provided a memo back in December fifth, twenty twenty-two, entitled incremental zoning reform in urban context. And we had a nice discussion with council at that time about the benefits of sort of reviewing the existing land use regulations and existing adopted policies to try to get some different results in terms of advancing long-range policy. Several of the things that staff recommended, you know, were to sort of reform areas that are more urban in terms of context. You know, where there are adopted regulations that have big setbacks that sort of yield a more suburban context, something that's a little bit more cart-oriented and less efficient. You know, we wanted maybe an opportunity to look at areas to relax setbacks and bring things, new opportunities to the borough in terms of infill. You know, where there are, for example, big parking lots and things like that that ought to be used for other things or could be used for other things. If the zoning prevents those things from happening, we wanted the chance to kind of analyze some different possibilities. So that was December. In January, the Land Use Reform Subcommittee was formed. And the initial staff recommendation at that time was encapsulated in another memo that just talked about front setbacks and zoning definitions and emerging land use issues. And we covered front setback review, a sort of a strategy and a procedure for front setback review and land use analysis. And from there, in February twenty twenty-three, staff developed a guide for defining context. Again, I alluded to sort of a difference in terms of physical form between suburban and urban context. And, you know, it's one thing for a planner, a physical planner, to sort of recognize these things, or an architect. It's another to sort of present them in a way that anyone can understand. So we used some pictures within the community that would sort of define these different contexts so that anyone could understand them. And we used East Street and East High Street within part of the planning area that we're talking about tonight to define a more cart-oriented suburban context. And from East Street out to this area, kind of a more transitional context that wasn't quite urban and wasn't really suburban. May twenty twenty-three, after sort of defining those areas and considering some of the things that council was working on to make the streets safer, to make neighborhoods a little more equitable. We submitted a Walkworks grant application for some funding for street scape improvements. And one of the places that we thought about working on was, you know, East High Street, starting at East Street, out to North Middleton and down York Road. So the idea was to come up with some design alternatives within those road corridors that encourage walkability. Where, you know, the current context is sort of large buildings, the rear of the large buildings facing streets. And, you know, the front of the buildings bisected large parking lots that, again, aren't very friendly for pedestrians or are less efficient than we'd like. We were unsuccessful with that funding, but again, that was another chance to kind of keep the planning effort going. And October fourth, twenty twenty-three, staff hosted a workshop for Frog Switch rezoning. And we presented the public survey results from the effort to sort of survey people about the possibility to go from industrial land use or industrial zoning to urban mixed use. And those survey results from a public poll from September thirteenth to twenty-seven. At that time, the public opinion was predominantly that it ought to be rezoned to urban mixed use. You know, some of the questions were directly, you know, from the zoning ordinance and some of the intents and purposes from that ordinance, such as, you know, making improvements that help the central district, the C-one district. From October fourth and November ninth, twenty twenty-three, we had another council meeting when we talked about shared parking, a text amendment for shared parking. And we used that context guide again to sort of show that there were lots of parking areas that could be shared. And again, focused on this area on East High Street with the sort of vast parking on the Carlisle Plaza area and some other areas around Frog Switch that might be suitable for shared parking. January twenty twenty-four, we posted a student project after working with a student from Dickinson College to look at the East High Street corridor. The student at the time worked with staff and the Land Use Reform Subcommittee to consider alternatives to revitalize the corridor with specific attention to the Carlisle Plaza and Frog Switch. March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, that increased distance to shared parking standards was adopted. And that study area again included East High Street, Frog Switch, and Carlisle Plaza parking lots. July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, we did another public workshop with council explaining the possibility for a small area plan. Again, we went for Walkwards money just to focus on street scape improvements and walkability. And the small area plan was a broader look at the area that included the Carlisle Plaza, the Frog Switch, and again, contextually, from East Street out to the Borough Line on East High Street and down York. So we were successful in that funding. We got the notification in November twenty twenty-four that the Small Area Plan MAP grant was awarded for that area. And we intend to proceed with a request for proposals if the zoning goes through so that we can kind of continue that discussion, really gather some stakeholder feedback and consider some options for amending the comprehensive plan. And hopefully improving some of the design requirements within the adopted zoning district. December fourth, council hosted another workshop and staff presented for evaluating rezoning for Carlisle Plaza Mall. And then January ninth, solicitor was directed to prepare an ordinance and draft it or publicize, set a date for a public meeting tonight. So that brings us to today.
And that's why we're here tonight to have this public hearing and receive public comment on the rezon of, I'm not going to read the parcel numbers, but six fifty, seven hundred, seven fifty, and eight hundred East High Street, eight hundred fifty East High Street, and nine fifty East High Street. Jared, you think you had an opportunity to also look at some covenants, conditions, and restrictions that are in effect on these properties. Just sort of describe the effect of those covenants, conditions, and restrictions on what our vision is for this site.
You know, the covenants that are on the tract, you know, my recollection is they're about forty pages long. Hopefully, that's not overstating the facts, but that's my recollection. There's a plan that goes along with those covenants that sort of shows where the main property owners can, you know, where they can have parking, where they can have buildings, you know, where access is prohibited and where access is allowed. All the parties that own property within the several tracts have to come together to make any changes to those covenants and restrictions. And, you know, my assessment from a planning standpoint is that it's very limiting what you can and can't do on that piece of land. As far as the rezoning goes, you know, the hope is to sort of bring those parties together to make some changes and realize some new opportunities with U M. But as it stands, it's fairly challenging without their assistance.
And if we had, as part of our, you know, vision, as our public purpose to, I think you alluded to making an area of the borough more pedestrian-friendly, accessible, having some open space and a mix of of uses, those covenants, conditions, and restrictions to work that purpose. From your perspective as someone who is an urban planner.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And Solicitor Wiser, thanks for being here tonight in the absence of Solicitor Brennaman. You've had an opportunity to look at those CCRs also. And your conclusion would probably be about the same, I imagine. Okay. Not that we can't overcome it, but that, because the MPC doesn't care much about private restrictions. It ignores those and allows us to go forward with this rezon. Is that fair to say? Yeah, okay. Are there any questions from council?
Quick statement, just, I really appreciated Jared's concise overview of all the things that have been taken place over these couple of years. We often do one of things in my mind, but they all really do collectively tell the story of how important this is to this borough and how it is in one of the entryway corridors and transforming that into a vision of the future where people are invited to walk and make make new developments and invest in different ways. I think it's critical. And even before all of our official things, we've been talking about it. And it's been one of those areas that I just look at it and I just see opportunity, like wonderful opportunities. So I appreciate so much all the time and effort that our staff have put into this work. So we often take credit for things, but I'm not taking any credit. I just, I appreciate the hard work that has gone into this. And I do think it's a really important and wonderful step in the future.
Thanks. Anything else? Okay, then we'll take any public comment. If there's anybody here who wants to provide public comment on this rezon. Connie, we'll get to you.
Good evening. Charlie Courtney with McNeese. I'm here on behalf of Point Plaza LLC, which is the owner of the mall property without the Lowe's and the Dollar Tree. And Point Plaza is a giant or an onhold entity that was used to acquire that property in about two thousand twelve. We also represent Newman Development, which is a prospective purchaser of the Dollar Tree portion of the site. And they've submitted an application for doing a Wawa on there. And then also Equity Development Partners, which is a prospective purchaser of the balance of the mall site, not the Lowe's piece. And EDP's plans are to reuse the existing building. And, you know, as a practical matter, for all the reasons that were said, we're all in agreement, right? Those restrictions are a bit of a challenge. Thirty-two pages, Jared. And so I'm not going to get into the details. I'm sure you're all familiar with them. But part of those, you know, the rezoning does present a challenge because of those restrictions. It's almost like the intent and design of the Urban Mixed Use District is a bit frustrated. You know, there's, because the size of the property in the Urban Mixed Use District requires residential uses, but residential uses are prohibited. The urban mixed use design has maximum front yards, you know, typical zoning, you're dealing with minimum front yards. It has those, but it also has maximum front yards. And the covenants and restrictions prescribe exactly where on the property you can have a building, which is essentially where the existing buildings are. And that's a visibility issue for Lowe's. The, and then the third thing is anything under those restrictions, anything outside of the building area is a common area. And so doing things like, that would make sense, greening up that parking lot, eliminating spaces, adding some green space because it has too much parking would be prohibited without the consent of the Lowe's property. So that's why there's this frustration. Our preference would be that the board or that council would would not rezone it until we've had a chance to kind of work through some of either working through the restrictions and covenants with the property owners or in particular with Lowe's. Or, and modifying the standards of the mixed use district. But I'm also not naive. I know you've been working on this for a while. And so as a fallback, we've had discussions with Jared. We appreciate working with Jared to deal with the reuse of the existing building and how that would have non-conforming status. So we've dealt with that. So I think that that's a good thing. Because the only thing we're going to be able to do tomorrow is reuse the building. And so moving forward, I think what you'll see is the Wawa application. The, there is no question whether it's required in the zoning district standards or not. That building has to be updated. It's a, the internal, it has to be kind of turned inside out to be usable. The facade needs some rather dramatic improvements. And those are things that Equity Development Partners is looking at doing. They're committed to doing it. We've already started to get some renderings prepared that we'll sit down with staff and discuss those. And then the third piece of this is site, what can be done in the site. And, you know, believe it or not, even just adding things like a bench, right? We're going to have to work with Lowe's on that. Taking parking spaces and adding more green space and trees within the existing sea of asphalt is going to require us to work with Lowe's. And so what we would ask is, you know, we sit down with Lowe's and start working through, okay, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, that, you know, perhaps the borough can be part of that meeting and express its vision for, you know, what they see happening, at least with respect to some of the common areas. So with that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Attorney Courtney. Appreciate it. Connie Byers, our former member of council, if you want to come on up. I saw your hand first.
I'm sorry I'm late. I didn't know this was happening. And it does relate to a question I had on the agenda, or I wouldn't have said anything. I was wondering where this property was because I couldn't tell from the agenda. And I also was unclear without looking it up, which I didn't do, what the difference in the zoning meant. And what, I guess, then what your vision is, it looks like there is a thought here of what to do with that property. But I wonder if you have a particular vision.
Yeah, we may all have different views of it. But while the change in zoning, I mean, this is an existing zoning district that we have elsewhere in the borough. So the old Maslin site is a good example of what can happen in a U M district like this. We have, across the street, and Jared mentioned Frog Switch that has shut down and has been rezoned to U M, to urban mixed use. So it makes some consistency on that east end, that it's a real gateway to the borough. And the U M district, because of its mixed uses, can allow residential, some industrial and commercial retail all on that site, like you're seeing at the old Maslin site now. Yes.
Hello, Ralph Miller. Give me the address and all again. One oh seven Warington Road, Millsburg.
Tiaman Miller, one oh seven Warington Road, Millsburg.
Okay, so we wrapped the workshop there and talked to you a little bit about it. But I'd like to comment a little bit on the zoning change. So we're looking to establish a business here in Carlisle, particularly in the industrial one, which is going to get rezoned here hopefully there. And there's new zoning that will allow us and many other businesses into the area of the borough that are currently not being used to their full capacity. So, you know, there's no longer, you know, the big factories. You know, times have changed, and I think, you know, Carlisle Borough has to change with those times as well. So there is an old saying, if you're not growing, you're dying. And some of these areas have been dying for years. And, you know, so I think it's just time to get them growing again. So we urge you to accept and pass the new zoning and, you know, without delay. And so you can get some more businesses into Carlisle and let it prosper some more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to provide a public comment on this rezon? And Stephanie, do we have anybody by Zoom? Okay. Then I will adjourn this public hearing. It's six oh seven. And we will roll right into our regular meeting as soon as I get myself organized. Six oh nine. And I called to order this April tenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting of council and begin with a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance led by Councilor Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I just want to highlight the fact that April is National Volunteer Month. And then confusingly, there's also National Volunteer Week, which is coming up towards the end of April from the twentieth to the twenty-sixth. So this is a really great time for us to sit and thank the people that help make things possible. I have been fortunate to work in the nonprofit sector in this community for nearly twenty years. And the various organizations that I have worked for would not run without the volunteerism of so many hundreds of people that I have worked with and thousands of people that have worked in this community for free because of their passion and their dedication to making this a stronger community. So for tonight, I just would like us to sit and think for a moment about all of the people that volunteer their time and put their passion into the nonprofit organizations in this town, but also the borough itself. Because we could not run without volunteers. The volunteers on our various boards and commissions make a difference every day. But also the volunteers for some of our first responders who put their lives on the line for us. So just want to reflect on them for just one moment and thank them for their service. And now the pledge.
Madam Secretary, the roll call, please.
Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. First up is an opportunity for citizens to be heard. There are no presentations scheduled tonight. If there's anybody who'd like to provide a public comment on any issues of Borough Government, now would be the opportunity to do so. You'll just need to come on up to the podium. Is there anybody who wishes to do so? Yeah, come on up, Connie.
Again, I apologize. I haven't been here for a while, and I'm not sure the practice that you follow. I have one question in the, on the agenda that you just approve it all, vote on the whole thing. And I hate to hold things up for that, but I just don't know enough about it. And I'm curious about it. And then in the rest of the agenda, I have some other multiple questions. And I'm just wondering, should I talk about those things now? Or can I raise my hand again and again in the regular agenda to either ask a question?
Why don't we just try to tackle them now, if we can? So I think you said you have something maybe on the consent agenda that you have a question about.
Yes, just that I don't know what the agreement with Delta Development Group is, what they do, what the agreement is costing, and I'm just curious about that. It's
Under budget. Yeah. Maybe Borough Manager wants to handle that one.
Certainly. Thank you for asking the question. Delta Development has been under contract with the borough for several years. They are a grant writing and advocacy firm that we rely upon heavily with respect to pursuing grants on behalf of the borough in order to advance a number of our projects.
Thank you. I need to keep that in my memory because it is important. Thank you. And did you want me to go through?
Yeah, go ahead. We can try to handle any questions you might have now. Are you on the regular agenda with the rest of them?
Is that all right?
Yeah, oh, that's fine. Yeah.
Is that what I should do?
Yeah, let us know where you are. Now do the same thing, Connie. I have to take my glasses off to see.
And I didn't have a paperclip. Anyway. This bike rack, "Bollards" issue. Had to look up that word. And I'm still not entirely certain what they are. I see these sort of, these kind of bike racks that are like S-E, repeated S's. Is that what we're talking about? Or they showed pictures of different sorts of things, and they were also giving online certain other definitions, whether it was for parking a bicycle and securing it, or even for like restricting traffic so that cars don't run into bicycles. What is the intended purpose of these under A three?
I think we have one or two council members who love this issue, so I'm going to, I'll let the deputy mayor or council shiles.
So these are, I'm going to pull it up quick to make sure I get it right. There we go. These are to adapt our parking meters that have, we got rid of our parking meters, but we left the posts.
Sure.
And so these are to adapt those and put an additional piece on top of it that would then turn a post into a bike rack. So it's not going to be on all of them. Correct. So there's still going to be opportunities to possibly reuse the other ones for future things. But this was something we've been talking about.
Yes, this is something that we were really pleased when council brought this concept forward. You know, we've seen it in other towns and cities, how they repurpose, you know, parking meter posts. And so essentially, this particular design, Connie, that we're talking about, it's almost like a sleeve that slips over top of the existing pole and gets and gets drilled into the sidewalk for security. So there's a picture of it up on the screen right now, Connie, if you'd like to take a look. So there, there's a, there's a picture of it up on the screen right now, Connie, if you'd like to take a look.
And would the borough be installing these or is the company that's selling them installing them or how?
Our staff would, would install them, Connie.
I'm surprised throughout this, the cost of things, so forgive me for that.
Tariffs.
No, 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 no. I mean, I just sort of think that would have been last year the same, but anyway. And besides. And this is just a silly thing, but about the, the two vending machines at Memorial Park. I'm just curious, who owns Memorial Park? I guess that is a borough property. I just wondered why the borough had anything to say about that. It just puzzled me and I, I guess.
You were, you were wondering why the borough has anything to say about it?
Anything to say about it. What, what, I wouldn't, Hope Station or whoever just go ahead and put a couple vending machines in without bringing it to the borough?
Yeah, that, that entire site's owned by the borough.
It's, it's owned by the borough?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, Hope, Hope Station leases their space.
And forgive me, I think that's, Heber Lake Park, is that yours? Brenda? Heber Lake Park, is that in your neighborhood?
It is.
It is, yes, that's the one that I worked on years ago. And so there's some additional items on for this to, to, some, some enhancements.
Which is regarding my next question, I was just curious, I mean, I think the Torrid Park just had some really serious work done replacing before. And as I recall, it was a community organization that put up much, if not all of the money to have that done. And I wondered if there was not possibly a community organization that could put up some of this money? This is a lot of money. And you have children in your neighborhood who are really going to use this playground equipment for this cost in this economy? Well, it's always this economy, but anyway. That's what was my curiosity.
Well, this park is the one that I've worked on, but this was not my initiative to actually get the playground equipment this time. The first time in twenty sixteen it was. But do we want to talk about the funding?
Certainly. Connie, if you take a close look at council's motion. We okay, with this, it doesn't really specifically state, but the monies themselves are going to be derived from, if you recall, the Community Development Block Grant Program and the funding that we get on an annual basis. Because we're considered a HUD entitlement community. That money is specific to go to specific purposes, primarily for low, moderate income activities. So these funds are the sixty-one thousand dollars and the hundred and twenty-three thousand is coming from the Community Development Block Grant Fund.
It, it's still government funding, correct?
Correct, from the federal government.
And I guess also, and I was looking at, at the HUD information a bit ago and I wondered why. I mean, to what extent is this used for housing? Housing is a really big issue in this town and everywhere. And I, I just was curious about that.
About, about what? The, the CDBG funds?
Why, why that money wouldn't go more for housing periods specifically? For people who need housing and can't afford it?
You're, you're talking generally within our funds or CDBG specifically?
The CDBG, if I'm understanding, is from HUD, is related to HUD or from HUD. And that's, I guess, what I was wondering about specifically, I suppose.
Right.
And, yes.
Yeah, so I, I don't remember the details of all that, but we do have, we do have housing components to that, to that budget. There's a, there's a budget that we, I'm calling it a budget that we have programmed that we approve annually. Maybe the Borough Manager has more, more detail that she knows off the top of her head.
I can speak to some of it off the top of my head, Connie. And I'd encourage you to come whenever we do our annual budget hearings on the Community Development Block Grant Programming.
Is that in conjunction with the regular budget hearings or not?
No, no, so the next, the next program year will begin July one of twenty twenty-five. So I assume in the next several months, you'll, you'll hear more about it. We haven't really developed it altogether yet. But, so some of the activities that you may recall from your time on council that we funded through CDBG have been things, for example, like homeowner, owner occupied rehab. So if you have, if you meet the income eligibility and you have a home that requires rehabilitation, there are, there's funds available for that. We have rental rehab assistance that we offer. We have an energy assistance program. We have had utility billing assistance that we offer individuals who are struggling to make their, their quarterly payments for utility bills. We have used Community Development Block Grant monies in the past for the two properties on East South Street. You may recall that were built with home program monies. We came to the table with CDBG funds in order to prop, to provide those new homeowners with down payment and closing assistance in order that they could achieve that dream of homeownership. So I, I like to think that we do a lot with the little bit of money that we get on an annual basis. And one of the areas is, yes, there's public facilities that we can improve, like recreation areas. These, this particular park equipment that we're talking about, Andrea could expand upon it a little bit more. But it's accessible, it's accessible equipment to meet our, our po, our handicap population needs. Andrea, did you want to go into that a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah, it's ADA, accessible playground equipment.
Which jacks up the price?
What was that?
Which jacks up the price or what?
No, not, no.
Sorry. Okay. That's just agenda, and I will, I guess I'll need to keep my eye on the borough's website to find out when this borough or this budget is being discussed.
Certainly, and you're always welcome to call me. I'll let you know when it is.
All right, thanks. I'm sorry, I don't have these marks, I'm just having to scan this. Just a quick one, the True Narc handheld narcotics analyzers is for the police? Is that for the police department? That makes sense to me, but I'm curious, or the fire departments, maybe?
I'm, I'm sorry, Connie, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm trying not.
You're self-spoken, you.
I am, and I'm trying not to blast out.
Go, go ahead and blast.
The True Narc handheld narcotics analyzers that are in, under Public Safety, number two. Are they for the police, for the fire, or a department, emergency departments? I'm just.
Sergeant Wazinski would love to take that one.
And, and it makes sense to me, but it just doesn't say, and it just doesn't say in here.
It's a much safer way for us to analyze potential narcotics if we go to an ambulance scene, potentially a drug overdose, to where the traditional way is we have to actually unpackage the item to test it, which not only exposes us, but maybe ambulance personnel, stuff like that. The True Narc devices are fantastic to where the package can remain closed and we can test to say, hey, you know, whether it's some narcotic substance, we can know within a minute or two of what it is and relay that to ambulance services or EMS personnel.
Okay, so the police will be using it then, pretty much?
The police will be using this, okay, thank you, that's good.
The Public Works, number one, the asphalt maintenance solutions. Is there a total price or is it just the unit price that you have? Did you know?
What, what we're approving there is a, is a unit, unit price purchase? Yeah, which is not unusual when, you know, purchasing for.
So just for whatever needs to be done, that's the unit price?
Right.
Again, for instance, the flow metering services, which is number two. And number three, the related assembly components for the proprietary disc filter system. What, is this for the water system? Water sys, what is this? To improve the, the wat, I'm sorry, what are these?
So, so number two is for the sanitary sewer? And so you follow, follow along.
And it does say that? Okay. And the third one?
That's a, that's a water, that's for the water.
It's actually at the wastewater treatment plant. It's our disc filter system. Takes, it's a tertiary treatment system, but it's proprietary. So we're using a specific vendor to rehabilitate it.
And it just needs fixed, correct?
You're, you're running out of items, Connie. Is there anything you don't want to ask about?
I wondered if there were any, if a summary of the amendments to the zoning ordinance that's going to be discussed in July could be described briefly. That is under Sustainable Community and Economic Development Planning, number two. F two. Look, what kind of changes are going to be made to zoning? Are there going to be additional regulations or are we going to be removing some, which would be nice?
If you're, if you're just looking for a description, when we get to that, we'll, we'll go through that in some, some detail.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other public comments? Stephanie, anybody by Zoom? Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe we have to state our name and address. I'm Hannah Roman, six thirteen North Hanover Street, Carlisle. And Rachel Lang, six two four West Louden Street. As educators in the area, we wanted to voice support for the borough's consideration of the welcoming ordinance. As a teacher who has students who are here on visas or not documented or citizens, I just want to voice that this would really provide support for them in a time where we see cancellations of visas and students being deported.
Yeah, I would just concur with what Rachel said. I would also like to support the welcoming ordinance so that all member, all residents of this borough can feel, yeah, can feel safe and not targeted.
Thank you, and thank the borough and the borough staff for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Eric Smith, one two one Southeast Street. I'll try not to go too long since I have a tendency to do that. But unfortunately, I can never make the workshop meetings, which is more the place for that. But I am also here to voice support for a welcoming city ordinance that was first introduced, I believe, at last week's workshop meeting. I see a lot of the borough, obviously still just one small part, but I am really proud to be a part of the community because of what I see as my role running Farms on the Square. To be clear, I'm not speaking on behalf of the organization, just as a citizen of the borough with perspective I've gained from being there. And the amount of diversity in the town, but especially from the folks that come to the town. When we talk about things like immigration or even Gaza ceasefire resolution, it sounds like something big beyond our scale as a borough. But seeing the people that come here, not just even permanently, but some of our most consistent customers at the Farmer's Market are international fellows of the US Army War College or their spouses. And while they're guests of the United States Army, they are also immigrants that are much more attuned to international politics than we might think somebody living in Carlisle would be. And much more sensitive about their safety and rights as non-citizens living here that are absolutely key members of our community. And I think they're just some of the most visible ones. There's also a lot of very valuable permanent, not both legal permanent residents and just people who are residing here permanently with a myriad of other statuses that are really valuable members of our community. And I believe that recognizing that really does make a difference in defining who we are as a town, as a borough. And also bringing the people of the borough together. I, I know that one of the biggest challenges with some of these ordinances can sometimes be the perception from the public because it specifically addresses actions by the local police department with regards to federal or state, usually federal agencies, interacting with them. But having worked with our police department, I think their biggest problem is being understaffed and having too much to do. And this really gives them less to do, says you don't have to do more than you're legally required to under federal law, like it just helps everybody. It allows them to do their job for the borough better. And it also allows the people of the borough to trust our police department and feel safer in our day to day lives. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Tina Ziegler, one twenty East Louden Street. I just wanted to actually ask a couple of questions about agenda item one, table continued and recurring items. I see that the council is considering to remove a resolution opposing any action happening in the Gaza Strip. I was just wondering if you could discuss why that's being removed without any sort of resolution?
I brought that resolution forward last month, along with two other resolutions. The other two resolutions were not about that. It was basically trying to see what, as council, we could collectively agree on to send letters to our federal elected officials, although these are very symbolic and we don't have direct power. We did do one on the, just to give context, on the SAVE Act. I'm sorry.
Do you mind if I jump in?
No, good.
Because I think there was maybe a misunderstanding. The removing from the table, I think you were asking why it would be removed?
Yes.
Removing from the table just means removing it from the table to, to allow action on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay, good call.
But then, but then, go ahead.
So, so. You're not removing it to like not talk about it anymore?
Right.
Or just removing it to?
My, my goal was not, was actually to, to keep it on the table one more month because two of our counselors are not here tonight to have a full discussion on it. But there was more conversation that council wanted to have on it before it would be voted on. And I did post it to my own personal borough, or my Facebook page from, under my borough account a couple of times ago, but I, a couple of weeks ago, but I could send it to you as well. And we did approve two other ones last month. But that's what that, that's what it is.
Wonderful, thank you for explaining that, I really appreciate it. And I would really appreciate.
It's all right, I'm still learning what tabling means too and logistics, sorry, that's why we have lawyers.
Robert's rules as a like college student is way different than Robert's rules as like actual in government, so. My, I guess the only reason like I was really concerned about talking about this is as we discuss the welcoming city ordinance, it's also important to look at our place in the global sphere as it comes to this issue. We are coming up on the seventy seventh anniversary of the Nakba. And so yeah, I just think that it's really important that we continue as a borough to make space for all of our borough members, and that includes Palestinians that are living here, both as citizens and both as non-citizens. And so they have a place in our community too, and they deserve to be seen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And still no one by Zoom, Steph? Okay, thanks. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. This is a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on in one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda, and that item will be considered separately. Is any member of council requesting the removal of the consent agenda item? And anybody from the public? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon. I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. So that takes us through page three and on to page four of the agenda. And we just discussed table continuing recurring items. Understand Deputy Mayor wants to make a motion to allow the item to remain on the table.
I would like to make a motion to allow the item to remain on the table.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, any, there's not discussion on that on that motion. I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Thank you. Nothing under my report, move on to budget and finance.
That's me.
I have three items this evening. I make the motion that Borough Council enter into an agreement between the Borough of Carlisle and Cumberland County on behalf of Victim Services, One Court House Square, Carlisle, Pennsylvania, to extend the parking program in the Pomfret Street Parking Garage. This program will provide financial assistance to crime victims and witnesses for parking while attending various court functions.
Deputy Mayor makes a motion to enter into agreement with Cumberland County on behalf of Victim Services to extend parking program at the parking garage. Second that motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
And make the motion that Borough Council temporarily restrict parking at fifteen parking meters in the Pomfret Street Parking Lot on April sixteenth, twenty twenty five, from noon until eleven fifty nine P M to support an event hosted by the Carlisle Regional Performing Arts Center, Inc., Carlisle Theater. Approval shall be contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance form naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable costs and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event.
Deputy Mary Landis makes a motion to temporarily restrict parking fifteen parking meters in in the Pomfret Street Parking Lot in support of Carlisle Regional Performing Arts Center, Carlisle Theater event. I'll second that motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
And my final item, I make the motion that Borough Council approve a proposal from the Keystone Ridge Designs for the purchase of bike rack bollards for ninety nine thousand eight hundred and eighty two dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars, number zero one four dash E two three dash three zero one, subject to the final review and approval of grant funding agencies and the borough solicitor.
Deputy Mayor makes a motion to approve proposal from Keystone Ridge Designs for the purchase of bike rack bollards. I'll second that motion. I will thank the Deputy Mayor for for bringing that idea forward to start with and having having thought of that, because I I didn't think of it. So so thank you for always looking out for those opportunities. And thank you, Stephanie, for for putting that image up up early earlier. Is there any other comment?
I I just wanted to bring up a little discussion and started. So just in looking at the the bollard design, there's like a you know, and it to me, it's like more bike racks, the better. And I am like, I think it's really great that, you know, we're thinking about repurposing these bollards, but the step out at the bottom might kind of be difficult with like locking a bike to it, just because like that's right where the pedals are. And so I I don't know if it's possible for us to consider right now, like there's another bollard designed by the same company that doesn't have the step out at the bottom, and I don't know if it's like possible for us to like consider that specific design.
Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, we had a sample of this coming to Town Hall shortly, correct?
That's correct, they reached out yesterday, so they're planning to deliver it hopefully next week. And that would give us an opportunity to really take a look at it prior to signing any agreement.
Great, that's that's great. Yeah, I just think it would be good to make sure we can lock something to it and it's not gonna like stick out and obstruct the sidewalk or anything like that, so thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, then I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
And that completes my report.
Thank you. Economic development. We're gonna need somebody to pick that up. Thanks, Counselor Mellon.
So I move that council made up an ordinance approving an agreement by and between the Downtown Carlisle Association, D C A, and the Borough of Carlisle Borough, retroactive to January one, twenty twenty five, through December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Counselor Mellon makes a motion to adopt the ordinance approving the agreement between the borough and D C A, retroactive to the beginning of this year. Is there a second? Who else is on that committee?
Second.
Okay, I'll I'll take the the second for Counselor Ruse. It is a roll call, the I'll call the question, Madam Secretary of the Roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Ruse?
Aye.
Mr. Shouse?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries. Parks and Recreation. Who wants to, who wants to take that one out?
Oh, it's me.
It's it's yours, that's right, I couldn't remember who it was here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things to discuss tonight. The first is that Borough Council may approve an agreement with LaKiva Davis, Ayani Stackfield, and Kristen Archie to place and operate no more than two vending machines at Memorial Park, subject to the borough solicitor's final review and approval.
Counselor Ruse makes a motion to approve the agreement with LaKiva Davis, Any Stackfield, and Kristen Archie for the vending machines at Memorial Park that we discussed earlier, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
Thank you. Second on my list is that Borough Council may authorize an addendum to the lease between the Borough of Carlisle and Hope Station Opportunity Area Neighborhood Council for the railroad building known as Hope Station in Memorial Park.
Counselor Ruse makes a motion to authorize an addendum to the lease between the borough and Hope Station, the railroad building known as Hope Station in Memorial Park. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
Thank you. I make a motion that Borough Council may approve the proposal from General Recreation Incorporated for the purchase of playground equipment at Heverly Park, sorry, Heverly Palmer Park, for sixty one thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars, number one, two, two, six, five, nine, subject to the final review and approval of funding agencies and the borough solicitor.
Counselor Ruse makes a motion for the approval proposal from General Recreation for the purchase of playground equipment at Heverly Palmer Park. Is there a second?
Second.
That's, we'll we'll give that second to Counselor Mellon, since that's her, she's the she's the coach early committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
Thank you. And having seen the equipment, it looks pretty cool, so I hope I hope everybody likes it. And lastly, I make the motion that Borough Council may approve a proposal from Willow Playworks for the installation of playground equipment at Heverly Palmer Park for one hundred and twenty three thousand five hundred and sixty eight dollars and seventy five cents through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program, Co-Stars, number three, six, six, three, five, nine, subject to the final review and approval of funding agencies and the borough solicitor.
Counselor Ruse makes a motion to approve the proposal from Willow Playworks for the installation of playground equipment at Heverly Palmer Park. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Ruse. Under public safety, I make a motion that council adopt an ordinance establishing a temporary parking ban affecting certain borough streets in conjunction with Carlisle Productions twenty twenty five scheduled events. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ruse, any discussion? It's a roll call, Madam Secretary of the Roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Ruse?
Aye.
Mr. Shouse?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Thank you, and the motion carries. Next, I move that council approve the purchase of a Trunark handheld narcotics analyzer in the amount of forty three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars from Thermo Fisher Scientific, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ruse, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Finally, I I move that council adopt an ordinance amending the code of Borough of Carlisle adopted by ordinance number twenty thirty two and thereafter amended with respect to chapter two forty four, Vehicles and Traffic, to remove one on-street handicap parking space at one sixty five West North Street and create two on-street handicap parking spaces at three thirty one East Louden Street and fifteen McBride Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Ruse, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, Madam Secretary of the Roll, please.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Ruse?
Aye.
Mr. Shouse?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you. Public Works. Whoever, jump in. Mitch, you go first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll give Counselor Ruse's voice a rest for a bit.
I have five items on my agenda tonight. One is that Borough Council may approve the unit price construction contract with Asphalt Maintenance Solutions LLC of Center Valley, Pennsylvania, for the twenty twenty five street maintenance program in the amount of nine dollars and ninety eight cents per square yard of applied surface under the CAP COG twenty twenty five, Ophirthen bonded, wearing course applicant contract, application contract.
Counselor Shiles makes a motion to approve the unit price construction contract with Asphalt Maintenance Solutions for the twenty twenty five street maintenance program in the amount of nine dollars and ninety eight cents per square yard of applied surface. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
My second item for tonight is that Borough Council may retroactively approve the mayor's execution of the proposal for flow metering service by Mr. Rehab LLC, a mechanic expert, Pennsylvania, for the installation of four flow meters, data collection, and submittal of flow monitoring reports on sanitary sewer system inflow and infiltration for a cost not to exceed twenty eight thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Counselor Shiles makes a motion for council to retroactively approve my execution of the proposal for flow metering services by Mr. Rehab. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
My third item for tonight is that Borough Council may approve the purchase and installation of additional related assembly components for the proprietary Kruger HydroTech disc filter system from Viola Water Technologies Incorporated, D B A Kruger, for ninety two thousand eight hundred and eight, eight dollars and forty eight cents.
Motion by Counselor Shiles to approve the purchase and installation of additional related assembly components for the proprietary Kruger HydroTech disc filter system. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
My fourth item for tonight is that Borough Council may retroactively approve the Borough Manager's execution of change order number one, final to the area two, phase one, sanitary sewer system rehabilitation project, contract B two dash one, to adjust the estimated quantities included in the spot repair contract bid equal to the actual quantity of the work completed on the unit price con- contract, decreasing the total contract price by one hundred and ninety five thousand one hundred and twenty eight dollars and ninety six cents.
Counselor Shiles makes a motion to retroactively approve the Borough Manager's execution of change order number one, final to the area two, phase one, sanitary sewer system rehabilitation project contract B two one, there's no way to really summarize all that. To adjust it downward, decrease of one hundred and ninety five thousand one hundred and twenty eight dollars and ninety six cents. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries.
The final item for Public Works is that Borough Council may approve the unit price construction contract for the twenty twenty five curb and ADA pedestrian ramp rehabilitation rehabilitation project to the lowest responsive bidder, Porter Construction LLC of Mount Holly Springs, Pennsylvania, in the amount of one hundred and forty seven thousand two hundred and eighty seven dollars.
Counselor Shiles makes a motion to award the unit price construction contract for the twenty twenty five curb and ADA pedestrian ramp rehabilitation project to the lowest responsive bidder, Porter Construction. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon, any discussion? Hearing none, please call, I'll call the question. All those in, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, I'm sorry, that's just, that threw me off. Sustainable Community and Economic Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under sustainable community and economic planning, I have two items tonight that Borough Council may consider. First is that Borough Council may consider enacting an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle, chapter two fifty five, by amending the zoning map through rezoning specified parcels to urban mixed-use district zoning for tax parcel numbers zero three dash two one dash zero three one eight dash one four two, tax parcel number zero three dash two two dash zero four eight seven dash zero nine, and tax parcel zero three dash two two dash zero four eight seven dash zero one zero from C two shopping center mixed use to urban mixed use.
Counselor Shiles makes a motion to enact an ordinance amending the code of Borough Carlisle by amending the zoning map through rezoning specified parcels as listed to the U M urban mixed-use district zoning, which was the subject of the earlier hearing this evening, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Oh, roll call.
Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Aye.
Ms. Mellon?
Aye.
Ms. Ruse?
Aye.
Mr. Shouse?
Aye.
The second item on my agenda tonight for sustainable community and economic planning is that Borough Council may direct the borough solicitor to draft and advertise text amendments to the Carlisle zoning ordinance in accordance with Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code and furthermore, schedule a public hearing on July tenth, twenty twenty five, at five forty five P M.
Counselor Shiles makes a motion to direct the borough solicitor to draft and advertise text amendments to the Carlisle zoning ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Landis. Now, we want to, we promised some some further detail on this, Jared, do you want to provide that for us tonight?
Sure. There's there's four items that council's being asked to act upon. And I'm just gonna read the list from my memo, because I think it was pretty concise. The proposed text amendments address the following, number one, the U M urban mixed-use district has built two standards that require all new buildings to be no further than twenty feet and no closer than five feet from the front lot line. Front lot lines, the one that's nearest to the street. The proposed text amendment requires front entrances to be oriented to streets to mitigate architectural massing to mitigate architectural massing and encourage pedestrian-friendly access to buildings within the U M urban mixed-use district. Number two, artisan industry is a new land use that allows small-scale manufacturing and an opportunity for retail activities for manufactured products by right within the U M urban mixed-use district and all commercial and industrial zoning districts. Three, minimum bicycle parking standards promote bicycle-friendly destinations for any new or change of use permitted in Carlisle. So the proposed text amendment will require two parking spaces for every parking lot that's got ten vehicle parking spaces or more. And then there's a cap on the amount of bicycle parking that you have to provide. And then number four, massage therapists are required to obtain a license within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The proposed text amendment consolidates similar land use activities and reflects current health and safety best practices.
Okay. Thank you, Jared. And of course, when this is advertised, the, the, uh, the four ordinance will be available to the, to the public, uh, for review. Um, there's a motion and a second. Any, for, any further discussion?
I was just gonna give additional context that these are all things that we, uh, discuss in our, um, Land Use Reform Subcommittee meeting every other Friday morning at eight AM, my favorite meeting. Um, because we talk about all of these in detail to really, uh, when, when, when these things come up on our agenda, well, they've been well-vetted and discussed and, um, you know, they aren't swift, uh, things that just end up on our, um, agendas. So, uh, I think the, um, for instance, just one example for the U M, um, district that build two standards, we've had the U M district for over a decade now. And, um, since then, we've realized some of the, the text in it, um, doesn't actually get us to the point that the development absolutely looks and feels the way we anticipated. And so that's why some of these small text amendments can help us, um, achieve the goals that we initially had anyway. Uh, but we just needed to tweak a little bit of the language to ensure that, uh, it's, it's also an easier process for our staff, um, to approve things without having to, uh, do a lot of, um, mental, like gymnastics to figure out how we can get what we want and also get, um, new investment and development.
And if I may, I would also add that it's not just at the Land Use, um, Reform Committee where these discussions have been happening. Um, over the past year plus, I would say, we've had periodic briefings on all of these, um, during various council meetings and council workshops as well.
Yep. Anything further? And, uh, call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Um, next is, uh, new business and that, that includes anyone who, I was too shy earlier. If you want to make public comment now, I mean, come, come on up and provide public comment.
Hi, I own Parker, uh, three sixteen Handover Street. Um, I do apologize for being a little late about that. Um, I wanted to speak out in favor of the welcoming committees. Um, personally, every interaction I've had with the, uh, Carlisle PD has been productive, professional, and pleasant. It's been awesome. Um, and the idea of burning your recruitment and resources further with, sign its stems from what's ultimately an ideological goal seems, um, okay, that's not the word I want to use, um, bad. Misplaced, let's say. Um, additionally, I'm on North Handover Street. Um, there's been a couple of new businesses there. Um, they're started by immigrants. Um, they're lovely. Um, the Yeti Oban folk have an excellent recipe for dumplings and I want them to stay. And the idea of threatening those people further with, in any means, is, is offensive to me. Um, making Carlisle welcoming, not just as a culture, but as a, as a legal structure, is something I, I very much support and would very much remember. Um, so please do, please do pass that. Um, I'm sorry about not having her speech, but anyway, thank you. Please, uh, please do so. Thanks again.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry. Two minutes ago, I just wanted to go back to the budget and finance, um, agenda section A one. When, um, the agreement between the Borough of Carlisle and Victim Services, um, I would just ask that while you, um, like, obviously, that's wonderful to provide that specific financial assistance. Something also to consider would be finding assistance to make sure that victims and witnesses can get safely to their cars. Pomfret Street Parking is pretty significantly far from the courthouse. Um, and so having someone or, you know, a team, like someone just to help make sure victims and witnesses feel safe as they are getting from point A to point B. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Stephanie, anybody by Zoom? No, no hands up. Okay. Um, next up, reports from council members and staff and ambassador. We'll start with our, our student ambassador.
Hi, my name is Kena. Nice to meet you all. I have an invitation from the C C L A at Dickinson College. We are hosting an event in Oath House one oh six labeled spotlighting success in which we will have a panelist of four wonderful women. And they will discuss what success means within the African-American and Indigenous communities here in Carlisle. It'll be from seven to eight P M. Oath House one oh six at Dickinson College, and we will have pizza. So yes, you're all invited. Please come.
Thank you. Council Ruth?
Um, I had two things to note from the Parks and Rec Department. Um, the first is that, uh, the application for Carlisle to be a Tree City USA has been approved. Um, we have been a Tree City USA since two thousand, um, which is quite a significant achievement. Um, and we are going to have a, well, the Shade Tree Committee is going to have an Arbor Day Observance on April seventeenth at nine AM. And there will be a proclamation while we plant two trees at Memorial Park with Children from SPY, that's the Supportive Partnership for Youth, and they'll be attending and we'll have some little activities. Um, so, uh, that's one thing that I've always really cherished about Carlisle is, um, its commitment to its shade tier program and the lovely trees that we have within the borough. The last thing that I wanted to highlight is that, um, the twenty twenty-five summer program and park guide has hit the streets. So, um, open it up, take a look. Um, it was sent to over six hundred households, um, and emailed to many more, and there are great program opportunities for people to, um, learn and play and be on team, uh, do team activities. So take a look. It's in that book. So, that's it.
Thank you, Council Ruth. Anything, Council Mellon?
Uh, I don't have a report per se, but I just wanted to say to all of you that are here that it's lovely to see you here this evening. It's really important that we have citizens participating in this process. So thank you for sacrificing your time, um, and coming out tonight. And I especially want to address that to our young scout there in the back. So thank you for coming. And if there's anything that you would like to ask us, feel free to come on up after. It's easy to do that.
They look like a no. We're working on a badge, right? Feel free to come back when you're not working on a badge though. Deputy Mayor Landis?
Uh, I just have two things that are kind of, um, uh, my, my other job, my, my day job at Dickinson College, but they're also community events. So, um, so on Saturday, uh, now it does look like there's gonna be some rain. So far, we haven't, um, used our rain date, but, uh, the North Side Ride, one of my favorite events, uh, every year, um, is happening. It starts at, uh, New Love Community Church. You get a breakfast, uh, free breakfast. Everything's free, actually. Um, you can get your bike tuned up, uh, free bike helmet locks and lights. Uh, we have a very leisurely three-mile slow casual ride, all ages. Um, and then we end up at Hope Station around noon. Uh, we get free ice cream. W D C V plays some tunes. Um, so if, if it does for some reason keep on raining, um, it, the rain date is April twenty-sixth, but still. Uh, and our, we have some, uh, some of our Carlisle PD folks riding with us again. Uh, we have our, um, uh, uh, special fire police guiding us, keeping us safe. And, um, and, you know, we're always, uh, teaching new young riders how to stay on their bikes. I first had my daughter on the first ride. She just learned how to ride and she didn't know how to brake. It was, it was, it was fun. Um, anyway, it's really great. Everyone's welcome. And then on Sunday, actually, the radio station, which I also love, um, is having what is newly, uh, called Local Fest because it's all local, um, a couple of local bands from, uh, Dickinson. Also, um, local is in Pennsylvania, but we have Yum Yum coming, which is a crowd favorite here in Carlisle. Um, and we're getting some foods from Vietnam Caribbean, and we got some macarons from Helena. So you can come eat free foods, um, chill out. That day, it really doesn't look like it's going to rain. So I think Sunday, so one to five on, uh, um, behind the Clark Farm, uh, kind of across from Old West, uh, on Dickinson campus. Also open to the public. So those are my, those are my pitches for, for all my things. Thank you.
Council Charles?
I was just gonna, uh, advocate for the North Side Ride too, but, uh, you know, there, we'll have live music there for the ride. So, um, you know.
Right. What, what are you riding this, this year, Council Charles?
What's that?
What are you riding?
What am I, what am I riding?
Will you be riding this, this year?
Uh, at, at the, at the North Side Ride?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a drum bike and, um, and possibly somebody on a, um, membrane phone. And it, it's like a, we'll see if we keep, we're gonna show up.
This is, this sounds enticing. It's gonna, we're gonna get more turnout. The drum bike, which was on display at, at Calc, right? Yeah, yeah. So it's a piece of, it's a piece of art officially now too. Does the Borough Manager have anything on behalf of staff? All right. I'll just mention, um, wonderful money, um, that, uh, that I know a couple, at least a couple of us were able, were able to attend. They're, they're getting, uh, their feedback under them and, and look forward to what they'll, they'll be bringing to us, uh, for years to come. Um, if there's nothing else, uh, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.